Let's start it up.
Good evening. Today is December 30th, 2019, and we'll call the Board of Selectmen's meeting to order. Four members are present. Mr. Farady is not going to make it. Also present, Town Manager Michael Unitz. Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Okay. Appointments and resignations. We have one appointment. Recording Secretary Dr. Conway.
Is he here? Not coming tonight?
Yep. I hereby notify the Board of Selectmen in accordance with the provisions of Article Four, Section Two B of the Norton Charter. Acting in my capacity as appointing authority, I've appointed the following individual as recording secretary to the Finance Committee: Sonia Tillis. Said appointment was made on December 23rd, 2019, in accordance with the provisions of the Norton Charter. It will be effective January 7, 2020, unless the Board of Selectmen votes to accept or reject the appointment prior to that date.
Anyone have any questions? If not, the Chair will entertain a motion to accept the appointment. So moved?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You won't have to take minutes.
Bonnie's on the introvert's.
Okay. License renewals. We have two remaining licenses to be renewed. We have a common vicar license for Ultimate Pizza Incorporated, doing business as Pizza Time, 250 East Main Street. And we have a Class Two Used Car Dealers License for Old Colony Cars Incorporated, 350 Old Colony Road. That one will be subject to receipt of a $25,000 bond. If that meets your approval, Chair will entertain a motion to approve those two licenses. So moved?
Second.
And all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Do we have any businesses that failed to submit their paperwork?
I think there was only one used car that didn't renew. Everyone was pretty good this year in getting them in. Not as bad, not chasing too many people.
No. Having not been on the board previously, you don't realize what a smooth year you had. Normally, I think 90% of them were done by the beginning of December. Normally, maybe 5% are done, and we're chasing them until the last week of the year.
Excellent. Yeah, Mike had mentioned something about that.
Yes.
So what was the difference this year? What did we do differently? We smiled?
Jen did a good job sending out the letters and...
We also told them last year, sorry, I'm speaking out of order, but we did tell them last year on the ones that were late, because it was always the same Dunkin' Donuts. It's like, we're not, because we had to call a special meeting to come in in between the holidays to do their licenses. We said if it's not in, we're not doing it. So I don't know if that helped, but...
Possibly. It was the threat that they'd have to close down for a couple of days until we had another meeting. But it worked out excellent this year.
And I see the note on here about waiting for the 304 certificate signed by the Fire Chief and Building Inspector. Are those all done too, Mike?
Yes.
Okay. Those didn't have to wait for our vote?
No.
Excellent. Well, I'm glad we got Pizza Time, because I'm a big favorite, big favorite. Thursdays.
Okay. Being an abbreviated meeting...
And that one other to make sure that...
Oh. In the packet for signatures, there's a 2020 seasonal population increase estimation form that's being submitted to the town, to the state. 19,000, I don't remember the exact number, 19,000 plus.
19,031.
And I believe that that population number is important to the state for allocating liquor licenses.
And what is this number based off of? Because we do a census every 10 years, right? How are we supposed to?
The town clerk provides the number. I believe they just go by the 2010, and now it will be updated with the 2020.
And do we do this annually?
Yes.
Okay. So when we go into 2021, we'll have the actual census. How long does it take to get the actual census numbers? Do you know?
I don't know how long that'll take. I can imagine...
It's a while.
Yeah.
Is it within a year, though?
I don't believe so. I think it's typically like two years, if not more.
Oh, sorry.
Might have gone faster with computers.
We'll see.
Yes.
Okay. Do we have to vote on that, approve that, or I know we have to sign it, but...
I'll just...
Okay, for formality purposes, Chair entertain a motion to approve the population increase estimation. So moved?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Being abbreviated meeting, we'll go, unless someone has any announcements.
There was one thing. Not an announcement.
I don't have an announcement.
You have a second.
Okay. In that case, Town Manager's report.
On the Blue Star Industrial Park construction on East Main Street, they've reached North and South Washington Street, so now the detour will be shifting. Cars will continue to be able to go west. There won't be the detour on Pine Street, but now when people are coming east on East Main Street, when they hit North and South Washington, they'll be detoured off of East Main Street, down to Plain Street, to Burt Street, and back again. They won't be working, they'll be working Friday and, Thursday and Friday this week. That's the only days. So they won't be going by the school anymore. The detour won't be detoured by the school anymore. And so they'll be able to start earlier in the morning, because they won't be affecting students getting dropped off at the elementary school in the morning.
Okay, we're heading towards 495.
Right.
What's that going to entail in that area?
Once they get to the highway, they're...
Just hanging it under there.
Yeah. So I don't know how they're going to do that.
So Mike, my understanding from that meeting that we had was they were going to shut down from South Washington and North Washington to 495 and direct people up so that they go, like Leonard to Burt, and then back down?
Just the eastbound traffic.
So it was only one?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I asked him to clarify that today, so I made sure. But...
I appreciate that.
Westbound will still be able to go.
Okay. And then I know when they shut it down earlier this week, last week, when they did it, I'm so awful my days. When they did it last week, you couldn't turn onto North Washington? Was that just temporary?
Yeah, when they were working right in the intersection there.
Okay. So now it will be, like if somebody comes off the highway, they can go left or right on one of the Washingtons, or continue straight down East Main. Because I did notice too, they had the detour on East Main, like, you know, coming up here for Town Hall. That's completely removed now?
That will be removed, yeah.
Okay. And then how are we...
They said there will be a couple of days, that they will have to do some work on this side, so they may have to change the detour. But he said it'll give us 24 hours notice before they have to change anything.
Okay. Are they putting up any signage? Because folks I know who got stuck in there had like absolutely no idea that they were about to get stuck in it.
Coming off of...
Coming off of 495. Well, even coming down, they didn't have a, so they didn't, if you came down South Washington to make a right, they didn't have any signage, at least from plain down, to say there's a detour. So if people got stuck in, and you know that, that's the bad intersection, so you can't easily turn around. So if you can just ask them about that. I know they had a sign on the corner of Plain and South Washington, but it faces traffic coming from 123, and they had it covered. I don't know if they've uncovered it yet, but I assumed it was a detour sign under it. I don't know if you've had any problems.
I think I go through time. When the detour is in effect, I'm already gone. And when I come back, it's open for me to come this way.
Yeah, yeah.
Everybody just has to get up early like I do.
Right. I mean, I haven't been stuck in it, but the kids have, you know, not been in school, so I'm not traveling that way. But I do know other people who have.
Are they taking advantage of tearing up the road to do any of the sidewalk work that's in that area? Or is that totally separate?
That's totally separate. They have to get this work done before that contract will stop in the spring.
That one is in the spring for sure, the sidewalks?
Yeah. They're going to, the traffic signalization obviously is the top priority, and then they'll be working on the road improvements. The whole road's going to be done over, so road, sidewalks, everything.
And remind me on the traffic signal, is it the one at Washington and 123, or is it the one at the highway, at the exit going first?
There is going to be, the exits will be first, and then down at North and South Washington.
Okay. And then next one is Worcester? So we kind of just move west?
That'll be like 2023 or something like that.
That's a couple of years out.
Leonard Street will probably beat that.
They're still trying to figure out how to stop the cars from driving into the pond.
Brick wall.
And on Elm Street, Reed and Barton, the work is done. The cross street is open now on both sides. We don't have a lane blocked off anymore.
You're not afraid of the rubble falling into the street anymore?
Actually drove by there today. Looks good.
Yeah.
Yeah. Do we know if the DEP and everything is done with their work? Are they still...
EPA's still working.
Steel?
Mike, are we, do we definitely have a lien on the property there?
We don't have a lien yet. We haven't had a bill from the contractor at all yet, so...
Oh, so we...
We haven't had any expense yet.
Oh, okay. So all that money we approved, we haven't really paid out yet. Okay. So how does a lien work? Once we have our invoices come in, then we put a lien against the property for anything that we outlay?
The cost of the demo.
The cost of the demo. And then what's the difference between that and like a tax lien?
Well, they can have a tax lien too, if we take it for taxes. It all depends how we take it in the end. If we take it for taxes, there'll be a tax lien on it, plus the mechanic's lien for the demo.
And assuming we don't take it, we'll have liens on there to protect ourselves for the amount of money that was outlaid?
Right.
So I'm just premature on that?
Yep.
Okay.
So can I ask, so I know we talked about this in executive session. We haven't released those minutes, right?
No.
So can we plan maybe an executive session for the next meeting, so we can actually talk about this? Because I know we talked specifically about the liens and what our options were.
Yeah, I'll see. We should have the attorney there for that.
The only thing is, is that next meeting, the joint?
It'll probably have to be the one after.
Yeah, after the joint. Can we do it after the joint?
Yeah, after the joint one.
Does that work for you, Mary?
Yeah, it works for me.
It'd be good to revisit it?
Okay.
Now that there's some tangible expense.
Any other questions? We'll move on. And report on the warrants.
Mr. Chair, are we going to do Selectmen's reporting now?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, I'm sorry. I'm out of practice.
That's okay.
I'll go home if you'd want me.
It's a team here.
Mr. Conway, do you have something?
So I do have one thing. A gentleman by the name of John Pino, P-I-N-O, donated some land to the construction on Robinson Lane, and he was wondering if a sign indicating that donation would be put up?
Yeah, we'll do that.
Okay.
Pino Cove.
Thank you. That's all for me.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I just had two things. I don't know, tonight's agenda didn't allow for it, but for, not the next meeting, the following one, could we also have Water Department in? I'm just kind of looking for a timeline, an update on where they are with the...
Treatment plant.
Treatment plant. And also, you know, there's an awful lot of angst revolving around the water machines up front, either not working or not being able to meet the capacity. So I'd like us to have a conversation with Frank about the possibility of putting a second one up there. I'm not sure what the costs are involved in doing that, but depending on how much longer this is going to go on, I just feel like that's a kind of a small thing to offer the townspeople who are struggling with dirty water.
They do have a meeting tonight?
Yeah, yeah. So hopefully it'll come up again tonight.
I'm planning on going down there to make sure.
Oh, are you? Oh, okay. Because I know it was a big topic in the last meeting, so I wasn't sure if it would come up in this meeting, but...
Evidently it will be.
There is an item on that, as well as the treatment plant.
And I think, Mike, from your last email, right, I don't know if you sent it to all the Selectmen, or just myself and Jack, because we both had emailed you about the water dispenser. I know, right, the conversation was Frank. You and Frank were unable to do anything to get a water dispenser, and the Chair of the Water Sewer Commission said he would not entertain putting one in, because it was anticipated that the first well would be on in January. Which, you know, I obviously questioned that, because he also said that it would be a full year before we would, the town would see any sort of improvements, you know, long-term improvements. So I don't know why we would delay that. And I was here, what was that, the 24th, I believe, getting water, and there was no water in the dispenser. I was pretty happy.
I doubt my house will take one.
I will, I will. Can you handle 13 dollars?
Coming from far away, I saw a car with Nevada plates the other day out there getting water.
Yeah. Well, you know, water's tight in Nevada. I mean, it's a desert. So. It's out on Facebook. We have a water dispenser. I'm sure everybody's coming to take it.
And the other question I had, Mike, with our joint meeting with school next week, is there an agenda item for the space needs? I know Matt and James had been working on it, I think. I was just wondering when we would get some feedback on it.
I'll check with Joe on that and see if...
I believe it's on the agenda, because I thought that you and I talked about making sure we were ready.
I think it was.
And you said you would have the operational expenses ready for the town buildings as well?
There was a discussion, I think there's a discussion item on, it said something about the article. I forget how we...
Yeah, I just want to make sure it doesn't get overlooked, because it's been a couple of months since it was brought up by the... Okay, that's all I had.
It actually references the article, because I think I had to go back and I had to look it up. But are, and are you prepared? Do you have the figures from the town side as well, and what our costs are?
Yeah.
Okay. So we look good to...
But we don't have anywhere to go.
Well, it's not saying we, you know, something wouldn't change, but... Do you have anything else?
Anything else?
I don't, but maybe I do. One more thing.
Yeah, go for it.
Since we don't have anywhere to go, maybe, can we get the plan for, I'm sorry, the building committee to come in and give us an update on where they are? I assume they are looking for places for us to go, right? So it's been a while since we've had an update from them. Plus, they've lost a member.
So they are planning to meet on the 13th of January.
Okay, so maybe...
At the RFP, I think they issued the acceptance to the proposal, so I believe they're intending to come back on the 13th and have something concrete to look at.
Oh, okay.
With the site selection survey, and then from there, be able to make some more. So I think they're planning, some members are planning on being there on the 9th, since we're discussing the appointment of a new member. But I don't think they will have any information to share at that point.
DB, I always get the letters wrong, but DBVW, I think, is the way the letters go.
Yep, DBW.
Is the company that did the Town Hall planning before, and they hired them to do the site assessment.
So Jack, you're the liaison, right? Have they lost any momentum losing a member?
Nope. They're going as fast as they can.
So the other thing that we need to think about too, right, is any sort of change or money that we're going to ask for has to be voted at election, and it has to be voted at Town Meeting?
Yes.
So do they know, and are they prepared to get something reviewed and on the ballot for April 4th?
That's what they, whether, their intent is to be have something ready for spring Town Meeting.
So not, so it wouldn't have the election?
Whether it's the election or not, I don't know what the timing is of that.
Can we call, I mean, I know we called a special Town Meeting. Can we call a special election as well?
Yes.
But then it's significant, I mean, it's money, right, that we're spending?
Cost, yeah.
Is there an order? Does it have to go Town Meeting and then ballot, or can it go the other way?
It doesn't have, there is no order that it has to go.
So we should think about that in respect to our potential recommendation, right? And then, because I think, I think the town clerk said 35 days prior to the election, the language has to be in to her, right? And it would, obviously, it would need to come before us, so we can make sure that it's good. I mean, I would, can you, at the next meeting, as a liaison, approach that with them?
Absolutely.
And it's probably more common than uncommon to have a separate election for debt exclusions. Like most towns, when they do that, it's a separate, so it's not something, if they're not ready for April 4th, it's not a crucial...
And I think it, my perspective as an outsider to that board, is that it's more important to take the time to get the proposal right.
Yeah, well, I would agree.
So, until a Russian stumble.
Right. And I mean, we asked them for options too, right? So it's, but I mean, if they, if, you know, by chance, they have options by then, just to, if nothing else, give them the timeline for that?
Absolutely.
So they understand it's there, right? It's an option for them too, for us.
And depending on who you talk to, some people would prefer to go to a ballot, a Town Meeting ballot, before an election, vice versa. Either side has proponents.
Yeah. No, I agree. I mean, I think they have, the PBC has multiple projects in front of them too, so I think we need to look at those holistically as well, if not. Or we decide we look at each project individually, right, and determine the best go forward. So I think that's going to take time. And realistically, I don't think April 4th is viable, but I think that sharing the information is our responsibility.
Yeah, no, definitely. And it's definitely something, not something we want to rush either.
Right, right. But at the same time, we don't want to let it sit, to Mary's point. We haven't had an update, because, you know, this was a big thing, and we need to make sure it gets done. So can I piggyback? Did you have anything else?
No, I'm good.
So I'm going to piggyback on that statement, Mike, and this is in respect to your email about the pictures of the urgency for a new Town Hall. So understanding that, I was going to respond in email, and I thought it was a better discussion here, right? We know we have problems in this building. You provided photos of the leaks, and then mentioned the electrical and heating system as well. So while I agree, right, we don't want to keep spending money applying Band-Aids, I mean, we have two choices. We either spend money applying a Band-Aid, because the project itself, we're still looking at two to three years at best, right, to build a new Town Hall. I mean, unless these projects go fairly quickly, but I think two to three years is probably a reasonable timeline. So we're going to have to have some investment here, or we figure out where else can we go. And if that's, we look to rent property, or we look to bring in a fancy dancy trailer, like, we need to understand. So I mean, I'd ask you, what are your thoughts on it? Like having actually seen them. I didn't go into the offices and look, I was just looking at the pictures, but, I mean, we can't let it go for the next two or three years.
Right. Well, it's obviously a lot cheaper to try and plug holes in the roof than it is to go out and find space and rent for three years.
Is there an opportunity to shift things around? Like, we have a lot of cabinets, a lot of paper. Is there an opportunity to find some efficiencies there to open up space, so potentially we can shift offices in other areas? I mean, we'd still have to put the Band-Aid on, but it might just be a better work environment for people?
Yeah, I know, well, I know in the Treasurer's Office, they rearranged where they sit because of it. Not much that you can do in the Building Department, so...
But is there, do we have, I mean, there's, you know, I look at the office, you know, down here, right? Like Jen's desk is down there, but then we have all those cabinets. Like, we potentially can move the cabinets and fit another two desks.
Yeah, we can look at.
Can you see that? I mean, because even if, you know, if we put a Band-Aid on from a leak perspective, I mean, not that I want to put a bunch of papers under leaks, I'd prefer that we look at an electronic solution for that. But, I mean, even, and maybe now's the time, right? Even going to a new Town Hall, we shouldn't be, we shouldn't be allocating half of the space, because we have all these paper records. So I don't know if you can look into potentially what that would cost. I mean, I know that there are people in town who would volunteer to help out, to kind of get a system up and running, to change us from a hard copy to an electronic storage system. But, I mean, you know, that would be a cost. But I think that that might, that might help to save, obviously, space long-term, get a better solution in place, and maybe provide us with some opportunities for some space saving here to move people around. Especially if, you know, you mentioned the heating in there. I don't know how cold it gets, or if we have, like, how that, how that environment is through the winter, but we're going into the winter months, so certainly don't want to see people freezing while they're trying to work and do their jobs as the heat kicks on.
You've angered the Town Hall.
I have. The heat annihilates it.
The problem is, it all goes up the stairs. There's nothing to stop it.
So can you think about that, or have some discussions with your group, and then come back? And, you know, I think if, I'm sure there's a way that we can find some money to make some improvements, even if it's just in the short term. I think we have to.
You go to the people that work here.
Right.
And I know the basement's a mess. How big a mess is it?
It's a pretty big mess.
I didn't know if...
There's a lot of stuff stored down there.
Yeah, that's right. I didn't know what was...
Is it stuff we need to keep? Like, I know all the election stuff is down there, but then there's still a lot of cabinets.
Well, that's one of the things that we do every once in a while. So a notice will be going out to everyone soon. Anything that's in the hallways or the open areas without a label on it, it's going.
I just didn't know if we could maximize the space on the first floor by storing it in the basement. But then again, I don't know if the basement is dry enough for paper storage either.
Yeah, certain areas are okay. We'll look at it.
Maybe we should do a tour in one of my next meetings. Don't touch anything.
Anything else?
No. So can we, Mike, can you come back to us, not the joint meeting, but the one after?
Yep.
And just let us know what your thoughts are on that. And thank you for sending the pictures to us.
On the same line, did we ever get a report back from OSHA when they came out? We're still waiting?
I emailed them, and then I called them last week. He said, oh, with the holidays, I should have time, so probably within a week. I've been very busy, so...
Okay. Okay, report on warrants and minutes. Between Vice Chairman Michael Farady and myself, we've approved payroll and invoice warrants. Approved invoice warrant AP 20-24 dated December 12th, 2019, in the amount of $1,115,096.48. Approved invoice warrant AP 20-25 dated December 19th, 2019, in the amount of $410,413.67. Approved payroll warrant AP, I mean, PR 20-13 for the weekend dated December 14th, 2019, warrant dated December 19th, 2019, in the amount of $1,369,914.21. And approved the invoice warrant AP 20-26 dated December 26th, 2019, in the amount of $3,806,618.60. We have three sets of minutes available for approval. If you're, if everyone's ready to vote on these, I'd like to just take them, the September 5th, 2019 minutes separately, only because I was at that one, so I can vote on it. So I'd like to approve the September 5th, 2019 meeting as distributed. So moved?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Then there was an open session meeting and an executive session meeting on September 19th, 2019. So moved?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And I'll abstain. Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Yes?
Can I, on the September 19th meeting minutes, I have some comments and changes, but I didn't have a Word file to update.
Okay.
Can we postpone this and receive an editable Word file that I can comment and send back to the, to the group for review and updates?
Okay, so that last vote we just took?
No, no, the executive. We did the executive.
I said, I said open and executive.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought we were doing one at a time.
No, I, I just wanted to do the September 5th one. No, I, I just wanted to do the September 5th one separately, only because I was, I was present for that one.
I misunderstood, I'm sorry.
That's all right, but we'll just reconsider September 19th, 2019 meeting. You want to approve the executive one, is that, am I correct?
Yes.
Okay, Chair wants to hear a motion to approve the executive session of September 19th, 2019.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And I abstain. And on the open session 2019, you wish to delay that until you have a chance to edit it?
Yes, we'll provide my comments, and then Mike will edit as appropriate.
So we, we will table the open session of September 19th, 2019.
Thank you.
Okay.
And may I add just a comment, and I, I provided this to, to Mike for the September 5th meeting, about attaching the PowerPoint and diagrams that we had reviewed during the meeting? Can we have those posted online too? They, they were the ones for the caravan lane, the above-ground storage, yeah. So I know we displayed them during the meeting, but it'd be nice to have them as part of the.
Part of the record.
Record, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, no, all the, anything that happens at the meeting, she keeps, Jen keeps a file, so every, hard copies of everything are kept on file, so if anyone ever wanted to look at anything, it's there.
You just got me with that hard copy thing again. There was a knife in the back.
Okay.
But we can post those with the meeting minutes, correct? The files?
I would assume, I'll, I'll check and make sure.
Okay.
Just scan it.
So our next meeting would be the joint meeting with the school committee and the finance committee, and, which I assume we're gonna, we'll minimize our meeting, but the follow, the meeting following that, anything you want to add to it that we hadn't already discussed?
On the joint meeting, the school committee meeting at 6:30, and then the joint meeting's at 7, so I, I don't know if you were gonna do any separate, how are you gonna do that?
I'm, I'm fine if there are items that are, like are better, you know, like any sort of licenser.
If we have something.
If there's something pressing.
Plan it on 6:30 and.
Almost, yeah, almost like our meeting tonight, if there's something that's pressing, we'll take care of it that night at 6:30, and anything else, we'll delay until the following posted meeting.
And Mike, I had emailed you and asked you to put an item on, on behalf of the IDC, onto, it's, it's for the joint meeting, not for.
Oh, okay.
A separate, that way we can, we can present to both FinCom, the Board of Selectmen, and the School Committee at once.
Okay. Anything else?
There was a note that went around today, I think during the school committee meeting, they're gonna recognize the two teams of cheerleaders that came second in nationals. They asked if we wanted to participate in that recognition, don't know if the timing would work out, but.
And that's.
Oh, because it was before.
That's 6:30.
6:30.
Yeah.
Did you get both emails? Did you get the one from Dr. Byetta? Because I only got the one from Denez.
I don't know.
I only got Denez's.
I didn't get, I didn't get any of them, I don't believe.
Did I get anything?
I did get both.
But we were on there.
They were late in the day.
It might have been, I think it was in the.
I think so, yeah, this came from Dr. Byetta this afternoon.
I wasn't really my person.
I didn't, I, you know, I have not gotten his email.
But it's funny because we're copied. Like I, I think we might have an email issue, because we are copied, he sent the email at 12:20 to, like, Mike, Bill, and Kathy, and the two, and then the rest of us were in the copy line, but I didn't receive it, but the address.
Same here.
Looks correct.
And then if Denez just did a reply all.
I got Denez's.
It should have worked first time.
Yeah, and Brad, it looks like yours from Dr. Byetta went to your Yahoo account.
Mm-hmm.
So I, yeah, I imagine he replied all.
I can print out a hard copy for you.
That's a good one. Happy New Year. It is weird, though, no, I'm, I'm just saying, somebody else made a comment about sending me an email that I didn't recall, and so I'm wondering if there is a, if we're missing some emails coming through the server.
I don't know.
Is that, Mike, do we open up a ticket on a ticket, I sound like I'm at work?
That's, what do you need to check?
About the, the email, so like I said, Dr. Byetta sent the email at 12:20, but we didn't receive it, we just got Denez's reply.
Okay.
At 12:24.